... March 2, 2010, meeting the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin with our flag salute led by County Council Tony LaBeuf.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little lighter than usual up here today. We have Supervisor Rockholm who last Tuesday had shoulder surgery, still recovering from his shoulder surgery, and Supervisor Montgomery evidently is ill, ear-related stuff, inner ear stuff, and heading up and down the hill when you got that is just no fun at all. So, we are down two supervisors today. We'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting procedures, please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, Tuesday, March 2, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
And just a couple of notes on the agenda before we proceed to public comment. Item number four is approval of the minutes typically. This would just be on consent. I would have had to pull it off consent anyway because I wasn't here on the ninth and therefore I would have to abstain. Given that we only have two members that were actually here and could vote on it, we're not going to have that item at all today because we don't have three votes in the affirmative to approve the minutes of the February 9th. So that will be continued to another board meeting. And also, item number six, we've received a request from the sheriff's office that item number six not be heard today and be continued to another meeting as well. So with that, we will go ahead to public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the board on any item that is not on our agenda? Please come forward and try to limit your comments best as possible to the allotted three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Clark Delock. I'm here on behalf of PPEO. I'm the new president. Address, I guess, would be 10810 Justice Center Drive in Roseville. The Placer Public Employees Organization recognizes that the economy is in statewide, excuse me, that the economy statewide is in serious distress. Just as PPEO accepted 12 furlough days in the last year of its current contract to share the burden of budget deficits, we again accept the necessity of sharing the pain of next year's budget deficit. In a February 23, 2010 memo to the Board of Supervisors, Placer County CEO Tom Miller stated that the budget deficit for fiscal year 2010-2011 was projected to be $23.6 million. On page 55 of this memo, the plan to solve this budget deficit includes $6.3 million in labor adjustments, of which $5 million is PPEO's share. On page 59 of the memo, it states that a proposed five-day furlough would result in the savings of $2.8 million. Therefore, using the figures from the CEO's memo of February 23, a nine-day furlough would result in savings of $5.04 million. PPEO recognizes the need for swift proactive solutions to the deficit issue. Therefore, PPEO is willing to extend its current contract by one year with the additional terms of a 0% COLA, a 10-day furlough. This results in the savings to the county of $5.6 million for the fiscal year 2010-2011, or $600,000 more than the county is seeking. All of the terms of the contract would remain in effect during the contract extension. The county has asked PPEO to share the burden of balancing the budget, and without protracted negotiations or litigation, PPEO is willing to step up to the plate today and save the county everything that they asked for, plus an additional $600,000. PPEO only asks that the board consider our willing, active cooperation in helping the county shoulder the burden of these tough times when the economy is better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board under public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then to supervisors committee reports. Anything to report since last week, members? Nope. All right. Consent agenda, we do have one item, 13A, I believe, a Public Works item that Public Works has asked that we pull off and will be discussed immediately after adoption of our consent. So, with the removal of 13A, are there any other items that any board members want removed from consent? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to address any item that is on our consent agenda before we take action? All right, we have a motion on consent minus 13A.
Motion for approval, second.
A motion by Wigan, second by Holmes to approve consent. Roll call, please.
Wigan?
Yeah.
Holmes?
Yes.
You.
All right. Okay, why don't we go ahead and take item 13A at this point?
Good morning. Bob Costa, Department of Public Works. In 2002, your board established county service area 28, Zone of Benefit 172, for funding, extending public services within the nine-lot Mandarin Hill subdivision located in the Penrin area off 193. Assessments of $817 per lot, which are adjusted annually for inflation, are currently being collected to fund street surface, drainage system, and fire suppression facilities rehabilitation. Mandarin Hill Drive and Mandarin Hill Court, the two streets serving this development, are dedicated to the public and accepted into the county's maintained mileage system. Owners of the subdivision lots have recently submitted a petition for the abolishment of the CSA Zone of Benefit and a relinquishment of all associated service responsibilities to the subdivision homeowners' association. These owners have been working with staff to ensure that the homeowners' association is prepared to accept the maintenance and rehabilitation responsibilities and that the appropriate agreement is in place with the Penrin Fire Protection District for the maintenance and rehabilitation of the rural fire suppression system. California Government Code Section 25217.2 describes the process that must be followed for the dissolution of a CSA Zone of Benefit. If the board supports the request, it will be necessary to adopt a resolution of intention setting a time and place for a subsequent public hearing. We propose that that hearing be held at your regular 9:00 AM Board of Supervisors meeting on April 20, 2010, and at that time, staff will also address the disposition of funds in the Zone of Benefit 172 account and the abandonment of the subdivision roads, including removal from the maintained mileage system. So with that, the actions requested today are that you first conduct a public hearing to consider the owner's petition for dissolution of the Zone of Benefit, and then adopt a resolution of intention, which is found on page 267 of your package, setting a public hearing on April 20 to consider elimination of extended services and to cease all related charges within Zone of Benefit 172.
Just confirming with council, we cannot conduct a public hearing today. What you're looking for is a request that we go ahead and on perhaps a date, no, because we'll have to notice it anyway. We haven't noticed, have we, for the public hearing?
Notice was investigated.
Yeah, okay. So we'll have to just go ahead and schedule it as a normal public hearing for that purpose. Is that correct, Tony?
Yeah, I don't think the item was appropriately noticed, but I think we can proceed with setting the resolution of intent. The board can adopt the resolution of intent, set this for a public hearing on the 20th. I think the conduction, conducting of this meeting will satisfy the minimum notice requirements. I will agree that it wasn't done in the best of forms, but I think we're trying to move this matter forward in cooperation and with all the interested homeowners in the area, and it's a relatively small subdivision, six or seven people, as I understand, or six or seven homes. And so I would request that we just go forward with the proceeding. We won't call it a public hearing. We'll call it a public meeting, which is what we're engaged in right now, and see if there's any testimony present that would object to proceeding with the petition to dissolve this matter as brought to us by the homeowners.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Sir, you're sitting forward looking very intent. Are you here for this item or a different item?
I'm sorry, I'll help. Can I go?
Yeah, come up to the podium, please.
Is it Steve just taking?
No, right up to the podium there, sir.
My name is Tim Halakis, and I've done the project, and I currently own, and me and my family, all the lots.
Okay.
My intention was to go ahead and sell them, but due to the change of the economy and to the change of what's happening over there, I would decide more likely going to keep it, and I have three kids, and me, and currently I'm building a house now, and I'm pulling out the three more permits to build a house for my family. So I want to make it like a private court for me.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that you're in support of what staff's trying to do?
If that's what, I'm hard hearing.
Okay.
My son was supposed to be here. He's in South Africa, he's coming today.
Okay.
My son had an emergency, and I thought I was retired by now, but I am here.
Is your son-in-law going to manage this?
Robert, you're the chairman.
My son-in-law is, he owns four with my son and daughter, and I own the remaining five.
Okay.
So it's a family entity. And we thought would be the best thing to have the county maintain the lot, which is not much of a lot, it's just a small countryside, but for the last six years, we had major ponds with it. People are coming in, they're using it for love nests. A lot of the babies who grow, were born over there.
Okay.
And stolen cars and everything, so we got the pond, we just, we go ahead and put a gate on it.
Okay, Supervisor Wigan, have a question.
And if you want, Steve, have your son-in-law give me a call when he comes back.
Yeah, he'll be here. He's coming 11:00 this morning.
Okay. So what we're, what staff is proposing is that we go ahead and schedule a public hearing to move for the abandonment of the public access to this and give you what you're looking for. So I just wanted to make sure that you, there was no opposition.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And you will be notified. I guess we're going to schedule the public hearing for the 20th?
Okay.
Okay?
Anytime will be fine.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else have any comments on this?
I'm sorry, yeah. The council's gonna...
So, we now have heard from the property owner that there is no objection to the petition. Their support for the petition will move forward for the petition as brought by the landowners and ask the board to adopt the resolution of intent setting a public hearing to consider and eliminate the long-term road rehabilitation, storm drain maintenance, and maintenance of fire suppression systems within the Mandarin Hills Estate subdivision, and to cease all related charges. That hearing is to be set apparently on April 20, 2010. At what time?
Anytime.
Anytime? 9:00 AM. That would be a motion if somebody would want it.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion, Wigan, to affirm what council just explained, and second by Supervisor Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? None. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so let's go department head items, a little early for time. So department head item number three. Mr. Bogan is available for us?
Well, good morning, Chairman Yower, members of the board. Jim Bogan, purchasing manager. This morning, item 3A requests your board approval to renew a blanket purchase order with Kent Oil Service of Stockton for asphalt emulsion delivered and spread. While last year's BPO with Kent Oil was not used, Public Works plans to use the contract this summer for a chip seal program, provided the department receives anticipated funding from the state. Kent Oil has agreed to renew at the same margin over their documented costs for materials as last year, resulting in an average cost for the material of $484 per ton. And that's delivered and spread. Staff recommends your approval for a one-year renewal BPO in the maximum amount of $300,000.
Questions on the side? Any members of the board, or the public wish to address the board on this item?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know, maybe Mr. Tabor can tell me what the chip seal, which part, which road is going to be chip sealed?
Not in District 3.
If it's not in District 3, never mind.
Kevin Tabor, Public Works Road Maintenance Division. I guess a quick answer is really, no, I can't tell you. Depending on what total amount of revenue we receive from the state is going to depend on how many roads we actually do. You know, so right now, we're looking at hopefully about a 30-mile project, which is about a third of what we'd normally do. So we'll, but again, depending, you know, we'll probably, the roads have yet to be decided.
Okay. All right. That's basically the answer. I've got some suggestions, but I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
All right.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion.
Motion for approval, second.
Motion by Wigan, second, Holmes to approve item 3A. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? None. Thank you very much. Skipping item four, moving on to item five. Maureen, you got a whole bunch of these things, huh?
I do.
All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Maureen Bowman, Director of the Adult System of Care. This morning, I'm asking your approval for seven 910 contract amendments to provide additional substance abuse treatment services for Placer County residents with funding through state and federal contracts and grants. Total increase of state and federal dollars is approximately $425,000 with no additional county general fund. It is included, as of our amendment in January, in the 910 budget for Health and Human Services. Just like to make a comment, substance abuse treatment leads to reduced crime, enhanced public safety, as well as savings in jail bed days, healthcare costs, and costs associated with child welfare. County contracts with local substance abuse treatment providers that operate a continuum of care. These services provide an option to those persons in the community who are unable to pay for all or part of their necessary substance abuse treatment. It also includes some specialized services for those who are court mandated. Just an update, methamphetamine and alcohol continue to be our drugs of choice in Placer County, although there is a significant rise in OxyContin, which you're probably aware of. Actually, more OxyContin in our methadone program than heroin at this point. And in particular of concern is the young folks that are using this drug. Our treatment programs see over 1,200 people per year in terms of last year's numbers, and 70% of those folks are exiting the program successfully. Mid-year contract amendments we do every year to make an adjustment to make sure that we're expending all those dollars, because sometimes where we thought the dollars were going to be spent, don't get spent. So we make an adjustment between the providers, but we're also adding the additional funds of our federal stimulus funds. It's a J grant, and your board approved that contract with the feds on January 26. So including those dollars and the mid-year adjustments are the total sum of the contract amendments that we're bringing forward to you today. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Supervisor Wigan?
Maureen, just out of curiosity, and for the public, at what age are we starting to see OxyContin use?
We're seeing it in high schools, definitely. We don't, yeah, I mean, the majority of people that are hitting the treatment sent, the treatment services are probably, you know, 17, 18 in there. We see a small percentage under 18, but it's definitely on the rise of concern.
Members of the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Wigan to approve items five A through G. All in favor, please say aye. 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 Oppose? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
And item number six has been removed. We still have 10 minutes before our 9:30 timed items, so we will adjourn for 10 minutes. Do you want to try a little bit of closed session right now, or do you want to just wait?
Yeah, I think I can go pretty quickly.
Okay, we'll go ahead then. You want to let us know what we're going into?
The board will take up the items on page three of its agenda for closed session. The item 7A1B, leading to State Lake Tahoe, will not be discussed, leaving one litigation matter and, if time permits, labor discussions.
Thank you. We'll be back at 9:30.
Republican.
Republican.
I'm not thinking.
Good morning. Going to go ahead and reconvene the March 2, 2010 meeting of the Plaster County Good morning. Going to go ahead and reconvene the March 2, 2010 meeting of the Plaster County Board of Supervisors with a report on closed session from County Council. Board of Supervisors with a report on closed session from County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board did take up the, some of the items on page three, Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board did take up the, some of the items on page three, item seven. As indicated, the lead to save Lake Tahoe was not discussed. On the case item seven. As indicated, the lead to save Lake Tahoe was not discussed. On the case of George Ann Petrovic versus the Volunteers for Multi-Purpose Senior Center, that case of George Ann Petrovic versus the Volunteers for Multi-Purpose Senior Center, that case was discussed with the board and direction was given to council. The board will probably was discussed with the board and direction was given to council. The board will probably continue into closed session later today, this morning, to take up labor discussions. continue into closed session later today, this morning, to take up labor discussions. That closes this report. That closes this report.
Thank you. Do you have a 9:30 timed item in advance of the 10 o'clock timed item, Thank you. Do you have a 9:30 timed item in advance of the 10 o'clock timed item, which I'm just guessing that's what most of you folks are here for, is the, the 10 which I'm just guessing that's what most of you folks are here for, is the 10 o'clock, o'clock, the Joseph Morello Church? Okay, we have one, we have one, we finished all the Joseph Morello Church? Okay, we have one, we have one, we finished all of our department of our department head items this morning, and we have one 9:30 timed item, and then head items this morning, and we have one 9:30 timed item, and then we will probably adjourn we will probably adjourn back into closed session, and then come back out at 10 o'clock. back into closed session, and then come back out at 10 o'clock. By law, we cannot take By law, we cannot take up an item before it has, the time that it has been publicly up an item before it has, the time that it has been publicly noticed. So, I apologize noticed. So, I apologize for keeping all you folks waiting, but we're a little bit for keeping all you folks waiting, but we're a little bit hamstrung in that regard. So, hamstrung in that regard. So, we'll go ahead with our 9:30 timed item. Mr. Durfee? we'll go ahead with our 9:30 timed item. Mr. Durfee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Durfee with Facility Services, and I'm disappointed Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Durfee with Facility Services, and I'm disappointed that this crowd isn't for my sewer annexation. that this crowd isn't for my sewer annexation.
Yes, they're here for your sewer annexation. Yes, they're here for your sewer annexation. Actually, you're really not disappointed they're not here for the sewer annexation. Actually, you're, you're really not disappointed they're not here for the sewer annexation.
You know, it's, it's, it's my job to bring these in and make them work. I would recommend You know, it's, it's, it's my job to bring these in and make them work. I would recommend that your board hold a public hearing this morning to consider the annexation of the that your board hold a public hearing this morning to consider the annexation of the American Vineyard Village property to county service areas, 28 Zone 173, which is the Dry American Vineyard Village property to county service areas, 28 Zone 173, which is the Dry Creek Sewer Area. American Vineyard Village was approved a year or so ago as a project. Creek Sewer Area. American Vineyard Village was approved a year or so ago as a project. One of the conditions of approval was annexation into the sewer district for the provision One of the conditions of approval was annexation into the sewer district for the provision of sewer services. The owner, Moyer Land Investment Corporation, has requested that of sewer services. The owner, Moyer Land Investment Corporation, has requested that annexation. The property is approximately 19 and a half acres. Ultimately, it will annexation. The property is approximately 19 and a half acres. Ultimately, it will hold about 140 residential lots. There are no annexation fees in Zone 173. There's no hold about 140 residential lots. There are no annexation fees in Zone 173. There's no impact to either the district, no direct impact to either the district or the general impact to either the district, no direct impact to either the district or the general fund of our recommendation today. The environmental impact report was approved in 2008, and with fund of our recommendation today. The environmental impact report was approved in 2008, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I do recommend that you conduct that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I do recommend that you conduct a public hearing and approve the annexation. a public hearing and approve the annexation.
Before I open any public hearing, any members of the board have any questions on Before I open any public hearing, any members of the board have any questions on this side? Seeing none. All right, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public this side? Seeing none. All right, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, we'll close public hearing, bring wish to address the board on this item? All right, we'll close public hearing, bring it back to the board for action. it back to the board for action. Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Weigand to approve staff recommendation Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Weigand to approve staff recommendation on item number one regarding annexation of American Vineyard Village property. on item number one regarding annexation of American Vineyard Village property. Tony, you have your thumb poised over your, no, okay. All right, with that, all Tony, you have your thumb poised over your, no, okay. All right, with that, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. And we are going to adjourn back into, reconvene in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. And we are going to adjourn back into, reconvene back into closed session, so we will see you folks again in about 20 minutes. back into closed session, so we will see you folks again in about 20 minutes.
And the board will take up further discussions of labor discussions under page three, item And the board will take up further discussions of labor discussions under page three, item seven B. seven B.
Returning on my microphones will help. Call the March 2, 2010 meeting of Placer County Board of Supervisors back to order. We have a report out of closed session that we will, I suppose, get to after we hear this item. Here it comes, counsel.
So, the board has returned from closed session, completed its discussions regarding item, page three, item 7B with regard to labor discussions, and gave direction to its labor negotiating team. That concludes this report.
Thank you. Okay, we will take up our 10 o'clock timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item. It is a third-party appeal of Planning Commission's approval of minor use permit, minor boundary line adjustment, and adoption of revised mitigative neg deck for the St. Joseph Morello Church. Before I turn it over to Paul or EJ, which is kind of running point today, to Paul, just a couple of notes. We have two supervisors absent today. Supervisor Rockholm had shoulder surgery last week. He's recovering from that shoulder surgery still. Supervisor Montgomery has some kind of an ear infection she's dealing with, and of course, lives up the hill by the summit, and the driving down going back up when you have an ear thing is a bit of a problem. We're going to go ahead and proceed with this item today, and there are some seats available in Conference Room A, which is just down our hall over there. There are evidently about 20 chairs available for anybody that might like to go and sit there. We have the audio. Do we have video over there?
Yes.
We have audio and video available over in Conference Room A if there's anybody that would like to go have a seat and watch from over there. Now, most of you weren't here at 9 o'clock this morning when we read the meeting procedures. When we get to the public comment, we have reserved, obviously, time for the appellant, and then the applicant will have time to respond. I believe the applicant, the church, has a representative here that will be responding today.
Is he correct?
There he is. Morning. And so, I'm looking to give the appellant and the applicant kind of equal time to respond. At that point, we will open it up for public comment. We asked that members of the public try to keep their comments to three minutes, and if the person preceding you said largely what you might want to say, simply acknowledging that, that you're here in favor or against, and moving through your allotted time without taking up all the three minutes is always appreciated, but you're welcome to your three minutes should you so choose to use it. So with that, we'll go ahead and begin with the Planning Department's presentation of this item.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Thompson with Planning. This item before you, as you mentioned, is a request to consider a third-party appeal from Gary and Evelyn Gogler, and Barry and Diane Haxton for approval of the Planning Commission of the St. Joseph Morello Project.
Paul, let me interrupt. Can you pull the mic down a little closer to you? I don't know that it's getting out there very well.
Okay.
Just maybe speak up a little bit as well. Thank you.
Okay. As I indicated, here to present this item is Roy Schaefer with our office, and he will provide the Planning Department presentation on this item.
Roy?
The board is being asked to consider a third-party appeal from Gary and Evelyn Gogler, and Barry and Diane Haxton of the approval by the Planning Commission of the St. Joseph Morello Church project. The project location is on the west side of Auburn-Folsom Road and south of Cabot-Stalman Road in the Granite Bay Community Plan area. You can also see on the, this, the two parcels, this is the South Placer Fire Station number 19, and then on the east side of Auburn-Folsom Road is the Hidden Valley subdivision, and then to the south of the properties and the proposed church site is the Shellborne subdivision in this area. Phase one is the multipurpose building, and you have a square footage of 14,350 square feet and 240 parking spaces. Phase two adds the church, which is a 25,000-square-foot building, and then you'd have a total of 412 parking stalls would be provided, and you can also see on this phase-two site plan, the primary access is off Auburn-Folsom Road, and then there is the secondary access off of Cabot-Stalman and Laird. It comes in off the south part of, Laird is up here, and this is the south part, on the south side of Cabot-Stalman Road, as the secondary access. And a total build-out, you would have 41,300 square feet. The architecture is described as, the style is California Mission style, and this is the elevation of the multipurpose building, and then this is the elevations of the St. Joseph Morello Church. The Planning Commission at its November 12, 2009, meeting considered the St. Joseph Morello Church project and voted unanimously, a vote of four to zero, to adopt the revised mitigated negative declaration and approve the minor use permit and the minor boundary line adjustment. On November 20 of 2009, an appeal letter was filed asserting that, one, the project's environmental document violated the California Environmental Quality Act; two, that the project was not consistent with goals and policies of the Granite Bay Community Plan in regards to site, scale, and protection of the rural environment; three, that some of the conditions of approval are vague and/or inadequate; four, that there is no evidence of alternate wetlands mitigation methods; and five, that the formatting of the SEQA document and Placer County zoning ordinance was confusing. Staff has responded to each of the issues raised by the appellant, as outlined in our staff report. It is staff's determination that the revised mitigated negative declaration adopted by the Planning Commission adopted by the Planning Commission is legally adequate and meets the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The project was also found to be consistent with the Granite Bay Community Plan and all county zoning requirements and development standards as affirmed by the Planning Commission with the adopted findings and approved conditions of approval. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the St. Joseph Morello Church project. And that concludes the staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions to staff by any members of the board? Okay, seeing none. Is the appellant ready to make their presentation? And if so, where is the appellant? Sir, you may either stand at the podium, or if it's more convenient for you to sit, I don't know how much documentation you have or what have you, but you're welcome to either. And your name for the record?
One sheet should do the job, I think.
I'm sorry, one second. I'm sorry. He's got one piece of paper. I don't think he's going over 10 minutes.
I don't think so.
And your name for the record, please, sir?
Yes, Dr. Gary Gogler. Good morning, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the board. My name is Dr. Gary Gogler, a 24-year resident of Granite Bay at 7970 Twin Rocks Road, Granite Bay. My wife and I live within close proximity of the project's proposed site, and we and other appellants feel a strong opposition and obligation to submit our concerns to the board in an effort to protect the sanctity of our pristine environment. We hope that you feel the same. For the record, we have submitted written arguments, photographs, discussion of deviations from the county's permitting process, case history examples, rebuttals and responses to rebuttals, all in support of our opposition to this church project at its intended site, which I hope you have had time to review. I restate that we are not opposed to the building of a church. However, we question the process by which this project at its current site was approved. In order to be consistent with what the county has required in the past for projects of similar size and scale, such as Bayside Church, Del Oro Estates, and Amazing Facts Church, my research and findings indicate that an environmental impact report should have been prepared for the St. Morello Church project, considering the nature and scope of the project in a fundamentally rural area. To briefly recap the points of my previous submissions, some of the major issues in support of this conclusion and which have not been adequately addressed are as follows: air quality, raptor habitat, traffic noise associated with school activities and the multipurpose building, greenhouse gases, parking lot lighting on all night long, and last but not least, the increased volume of traffic on Auburn-Folsom Road. The use of traffic data from 2005 to say that there is no change today or in the out years defies all common logic as well as what is actually happening today. This type of logic would have failed me in Electrical Engineering College. Additionally, there are questionable procedural issues relative to the Planning Commission's permitting process for this project, such as unsubstantiated effects of cumulative impacts of future project additions, such as the school and the church. My understanding is that the multipurpose building is the first to be constructed, and the church proper would then be built at a later time. Also, undocumented methodology or action that the church should or would apply for the preservation of the historical building on the project's site. Lastly, I maintain that the project is counter to the principles of the Granite Bay Community Plan. For example, maintaining the rural character of our area, this was summarily dismissed. Serving the people of the immediate community, also dismissed. Limiting the size of buildings and their height, this was obfuscated. There are numerous other concerns and irregularities with the initial study, its findings, and proposed mitigations, which are based on assumptions, assertions, and hypotheses without any proof to back them up. The recurring rationale from the Planning Commission and the project's legal counsel and project manager is, I don't think so. How convincing is this? Not very convincing to me at all. In conclusion, by law and by the vote of the people, the board governs the county. Among other duties and responsibilities of the board is making important land use decisions. Hopefully, in light of all of the information provided, the board will make the right decision to uphold our appeal and return the matter to the Planning Commission for further environmental and procedural review. This project is inconsistent with the nature of the area. Thank you for consideration of our appeal.
Thank you. Stay there for just a moment. Board members have any questions of the appellant at this time? Staff have any questions or comments in regard to the appellant's presentation? I have one question for you, and that is, pardon me, having actually read your correspondence. One of your comments in your correspondence indicate the concern with the construction of the church in a rural setting, rural roadway, and you suggest that there might be other locations that are more suitable. And I believe you cited one of them as the existing use center off of Wells. Is it your assertion that somehow Wells is better suited to handle the traffic than Auburn-Folsom Road?
It would divert the traffic away from Auburn-Folsom Road and move it over primarily to Barton.
Yeah, I understand that. That was my question. My question is, do you believe that Wells is better suited to handle the traffic than Auburn-Folsom Road? I understand it would divert it, but do you believe Wells Road is better suited to handle the traffic than Auburn-Folsom Road?
That is speculative.
I'm simply asking your opinion.
My opinion. Depending upon exactly how the daily use and traffic flow actually is, Wells and that area would probably be able to handle the traffic better. And the other issue that's associated with that, as I pointed out in my documentation, is the increased traffic on Auburn-Folsom is a very serious problem, given that that avenue from Auburn down to the American River is a major bicycle thoroughfare that is extremely popular with bicyclists. So if you have increased traffic on Auburn-Folsom Road, you have a high opportunity for injury and death. Wells Road, Barton, and those areas are not bicycle trails at all. So that would completely eliminate that issue.
Folks, if you will, please. Gentlemen, as due. Thank you. I have no other questions. I see no other questions from any of the members of the board. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question of staff.
I'm sorry.
Our microphone doesn't kill us here. Do you know what the percentage coverage of all of the improvements would be, the parking lot plus the phases one and two of the church? It's a 12-acre site, right?
It's 12.8 acres. We'd have to take a look at that real quick, and we can probably get that answer for you.
It looks like it's approximately less than an acre in coverage.
You might want to relook at that. I have to assume that, given the square footage of the church, as well as the parking lot and all the rest, you're going to have more than an acre coverage.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I think supervisor's question was total coverage, land coverage. Right, right. And if we can actually flip back a couple of maps there on the overhead.
EJ, do you have the remote, or is it up there? You might want to flip back a couple on the overhead and show the project. Right there, that's the one. So, you have 4.6 acres to the north, and it looks like kind of a remainder parcel to the south. Looks like the middle third, 40% or so is what we're talking about, the coverage.
If they could get it later.
I'm sorry? Yeah, get the numbers.
They could get that to us as you figure it out. Don't have to do it right now.
The applicant might actually have some information on that as well. Any other questions for the appellant? I see none. Thank you, sir, for your time. And the applicant's representative, Mr. Cook, good morning. Pardon me.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity. If possible, what I'd like to do is introduce Father Arnold Ortiz, let him introduce the members of his parish who are here in support of the project, and then I will come back up after a few of those make comments.
Okay.
And respond to some of the other questions.
And we have our 10-minute clock ticking for Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
And Father?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Members of the board, thank you for allowing me to address your distinguished panel this morning. I am Father Arnold Ortiz, appointed pastor of St. Joseph Morello Parish, which was founded six years ago, January 1, 2004. We currently serve over 700 families in the greater Granite Bay area, and many are here today to show their support for this project, as you can see. Could you just raise your hands, all of you who are members of our parish? Just so that you know.
Yes, we figured something was up.
Yeah.
It's not like this every Tuesday. It's not our normal Tuesday crowd here.
And I assured them that today I did not bring a collection basket with me.
But supervisor, why get his running for it like that?
We could sure use a notebook.
We actually began to form our faith community, known as St. Joseph Morello Parish, with 350 local households. At that time, many families in the area were traveling out of the area to get to weekend services principally in Roseville, Rockland, Orangevale, and Folsom. The parish satisfied a very great and real need for these families, who now no longer have to travel far to get to worship services. Without a place to call home, however, we currently rent two facilities. On weekends, the Cabot Middle School Gym on Fuller Drive in Granite Bay, and on Wednesdays and Sunday evenings, the Morello Youth Retreat Center, which is located on Wells Avenue referred to earlier. Depending on the need and the event, we must also rent other local venues. We strive to meet the spiritual and social needs of our membership, offering activities such as Bible studies and adult education in the faith, to social events, and a very vibrant youth ministry from grades one through high school, and an outreach to our senior infirmed and homebound parishioners, to name just a few of our very important ministries. However, we are not interested solely in taking care of ourselves. We want to be a positive presence in the community at large and be of help wherever we are able. For example, our members assist a number of local families who during these difficult economic times find themselves in great need of the basics. We provide food and satisfy other needs, and we help stock the food shelves at St. Vince DePaul in Roseville, where many individuals and families in our own area turn for assistance. Many men of our parish belong to a fraternal organization called the Knights of Columbus, who present events throughout the year to raise funds for local charities, including organizations like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, South Placer Firemen's Association, the National Association for the Mentally Ill of Placer County, and Camp Recreation, to name just a few. Our faith community is already formed and meets a, and needs a permanent home, and as you can see, the positive vote of the Board of Supervisors this morning to deny the appeal and allow us to proceed with completion of our improvement plans and building permit will be a great blessing to all our members who live in the Granite Bay area and to all our neighbors as well. I'd like to introduce to you four of our members who are prepared to offer a speech, a few words, and they are Mrs. Lucy Peters, a resident of the Shelbourne community directly to the south of our property, Dr. Charles Forster, a resident of Hidden Valley, who lives directly east of the property, and local residents Tim Vostias, who is the chair of our building committee for the past six years, and Michael De Laurentis, who is a member of the board for the fire department. So Lucy Peters would come forward, please.
Father, if I may just suggest, given that we're going to limit applicant's time to 10 minutes as well, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Cook come back over, respond to any questions board might have, provide any information to this board, and then what we'll do is we'll take those four people first under public comment. How's that?
Very well, very well. Thank you very much.
That way they have their own three minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Dave Cook, RCH Group, on behalf of the parish and the diocese. Thanks. To Robert's question, the coverage for the buildings, the building's total, just under an acre. It's about seven and a half percent of the site. 412 parking spaces, assuming about 200 square feet each, you end up with, we would estimate about three more acres. So you would have about 28, 30% coverage. Typically, FAR, or coverage, in the zoning code, as we know, relates to the buildings on the site. Does it include the parking? In this zoning district, you would be able to get up to 35% coverage with a rezag designation for barns, buildings, et cetera. So... Obviously, we disagree with the appellant's assertions, as he indicated, and this has been a long process for this church. As Father Arnold indicated, it started in 2004. The application process actually started in 2006. So it's been, it's been a journey. We have, as staff indicated, had approval from the MAC, obviously unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, but we've also held neighborhood meetings. And with those neighbors immediately adjacent to the property on the east, that's Hidden Valley, also the neighborhood to the south, separated by one or two parcels, and that's Shelbourne, and then some other neighbors up to the north. Out of any of those meetings, I should say, there were no objections, no concerns raised out of any of those meetings. I want to clarify a couple of things. In the staff report, I think Roy mentioned 14,000 square feet on the multipurpose room, actually with the potential addition, a total 16.3. I just want to have that on the record. The applicant's, or excuse me, the appellant's February 5 letter opens with his opposition being based solely on his belief that the project of 44,000 square feet, followed by a fairly sizable school, is inappropriate for the proposed location, a rural area with roadways insufficient to handle the traffic increase. There is no school. There was a school that was included, and there is confusion, and I understand is confusion based on a wetlands application. Our application, the analysis that was done, the conditions of approval, did not address the school. That is not a proposed use. It was not described. It is not approved, and it is simply shown as a placeholder in the wetland permit. I'll let Kevin Kemper, our attorney, speak to legal precedent as to whether that should or should not have been analyzed in the environmental documentation, but there is no school proposed with this project. Dr. Gogler indicates that the parish wants to build a facility scaled for a significantly larger population and geographic area in violation of the Granite Bay Community Plan. And I think that Father Arnold indicated fairly clearly, this is an existing parish. This is not a new church. It's not a new operation. They've been meeting since 2004. They've been meeting since 2004 at the Cabot Junior High School. This serves the immediate area. They've already got 700 parishioners. And I've done a little bit of research. I think in the Folsom, Orangevale, Rockland, Roseville, Granite Bay area, there exist approximately fourteen parishes. These are community churches. From a scale standpoint, and I heard mention of Amazing Facts and Bayside, this church, again, forty-one thousand, three hundred square feet at Buildout, compared with, at Buildout on Amazing Facts, a hundred and eighty-six thousand square feet. And on Bayside, excuse me, that's Bayside, if I'm not mistaken, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand square feet on Amazing Facts. Very different. This, basically, this is a community church. We feel that we have adequately addressed the impacts. We think it's a good project, well-designed. It does fit in the neighborhood architecturally, as well as pursuant to zoning code. And we would ask that this board deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the applicant? Supervisor Wigan?
Just staff concur with the coverage, the percentage coverage. We're about on the same ballpark.
Yes, Supervisor Wigan, it is approximately the same. What we did is we included both properties here. They total about seventeen acres. And this would be excluding the playfield area, which is just a detention facility.
Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes?
Father, there was mention in the appellant's comments about all-night lighting. Is the facility going to be lit all night, lighted all night?
Let me clarify that. Title 24, which this building and the ancillary facilities will be constructed pursuant to, requires that, after normal operating hours, at least fifty percent of the exterior lights be turned off. Now, you can't, for any operation, turn off all lights. That wouldn't be prudent. There are liabilities associated with that. But it's my understanding that the building department, as well as the construction and design teams, will propose to comply with Title 24 and therefore reduce the lighting by at least fifty percent at night.
And those will be low-impact?
These are low-impact directed fixtures as required and are fixtures in compliance with the night sky criteria.
Did you want to say something, Paul?
Yes. On condition three of your, in the conditions, page 18, there's a specific condition relating to lighting. It indicates that the light shall be placed on timers. It has height requirements. It has the actual type of lighting to be installed. So there is definitely a condition addressing the lighting issue in the parking lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. The, I'm sorry?
If I may, could we have the attorney for the project?
I'll take him first in the public hearing. How's that?
That would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. So that means he has three minutes?
He talks fast.
I'm sure for an attorney, that's an eternity, right? Yes, yes. Counsel assures me it's adequate.
Forget it's adequate. I'll live and die in my three minutes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman Yule, members of the board. My name is Kevin Kemper, legal counsel for the parish. The appellant has raised a number of SEQA arguments. I'd like to respond to them, primarily two. One is the need for a preparation of an EIR for this project. We are entirely comfortable with the determinations made by the county, the planning commission, along with staff, that a negative declaration was adequate for this project. Under SEQA, you're only required to prepare an EIR if the project has a significant impact on the environment. If the project impacts can be mitigated through enforceable mitigation measures, as is the case here, it's suitable for the project to proceed under SEQA on the basis of a mitigated negative declaration, as was done. We acknowledge the fair argument rule in case law about the threshold for preparing an EIR. I would say you can't talk about the fair argument without talking about what the fair argument is about. And in this case, the appellant has raised no substantial evidence that the project would have a significant impact on the environment that cannot and has not been mitigated by the measures imposed by the planning commission. And the substantial evidence can't be based on a feeling. It can't be based on just, I know there's going to be an adverse condition on Auburn-Folsom Road. You've got to look at the data. And the data is in the record. This project's peak hour trips are going to be on Sundays. And Auburn-Folsom Road on Sundays, there's lots of bicyclists. There's not a tremendous amount of cars. After this project, it will continue to operate at Level of Service B, which is well above the applicable threshold in the community plan. Finally, the other issue of concern relates to the school. The term of art under SEQA is project segmentation. Did the county improperly segment a future school from the project under consideration, which is a church in a multipurpose facility? The answer is no. It's not. The church has not applied for a future school on the site, and the county did not approve one and did not analyze one. Was not required to. Legal test under SEQA, if a project should be considered as one project, multiple phases. If a school is reasonably foreseeable consequence of the initial project and if the future expansion or action will be significant in that it will likely change the scope or nature of the initial project. SEQA requires the answer for both of those questions to be yes. But in our case, the answer is no. The church and the multipurpose room stand alone. They have independent utility. The church does not need a school in order for the church to function as a church or for the multipurpose room to function as a multipurpose room. Secondly, adding a school will not change the scope of the church. The church is what it is. It's been approved at a certain size. So we don't believe that there's any segmentation issues under SEQA. We're entirely comfortable with the determinations the county has made thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Father had identified, pardon me, four individuals. I believe he mentioned a lady's name first. And I forget the order. I apologize. But if you know who you are, that the father mentioned, if you go ahead and step forward at this point. Is there somebody in the back that is stepping forward? Please, come on up. And then I know Dr. Forrester was mentioned. Ma'am, are you here from Shellborne? Okay, perfect. And then I believe Dr. Forrester was mentioned next. And then we had two others. I don't recall. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Lucy Peters. I have lived in Shellborne Estates off of Auburn-Folsom Road for eleven years. I have had the privilege of raising my four children in this Granite Bay community. I am here today to strongly support the construction of St. Joseph Morello Church on the property to the north of Shellborne. My husband and I believe that this church will dramatically enhance our community by providing a place to gather and worship. Knowing that Shellborne would be one of the most affected neighborhoods by this project, we hosted a meeting at our home last year, inviting all of our neighbors to discuss their concerns. At that meeting, there was general support for this project. In fact, the only question that was significant was about drainage of storm water from the church property into Shellborne. And that issue was addressed to our satisfaction. For those of you who are not aware, Shellborne is one of the closest neighborhoods to the proposed church and consequently may be the most impacted by such a development. It is reassuring that there is very little concern in our neighborhood regarding the church. Any physical plant that creates space for people to meet is a benefit to a community. The multipurpose building and future church are designed to blend with our environment, be aesthetically pleasing, and consistent with California mission architecture. We have longed to have a church where our children can gather and learn about their Catholic faith. One major priority as parents is to instill in our children the importance of being empathetic stewards in our society. We need a place to plan and execute community service, a major tenet of Catholicism. St. Joseph Morello Parish is involved with many local service projects. And by creating a place to gather, we will bring more life to Granite Bay and further expand our outreach programs to the community. I recognize that change is difficult for some people. I'm very sympathetic to the reality that this church will change the look of this property and may affect current traffic flow patterns on Auburn-Folsom Road. But goodness also flows from houses of worship. Kindness envelops surrounding areas and seeds of compassion create a community that cares about others. While we are building a Catholic church, we are also building a place to celebrate weddings, children's baptisms, and other special events. This structure is a place where generations can celebrate
Go ahead.
the most important milestones of their lives. We've been meeting in a gymnasium for a long time. The Granite Bay Catholic community deeply hungers for our own space. This church is important to hundreds of families in Granite Bay. Please allow us to add to this community with beautiful buildings that will enhance our neighborhood, bring people together to celebrate life and death, and be a place where goodness and kindness can be cultivated and shared. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Dr. Forrester, I believe you were. I'm going to ask if, in the interest of time, we dispense with the applause at this point. We just get through our speakers. We'll just move right on through. Doctor?
Good morning, Chairman Yule and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Dr. Charles Forrester. My wife Agnes and I have been members of the St. Joseph Morello Parish since its inception in January of 2004. I have been a member of the parish council for the past four years and currently serve as president. My family and I moved to Hidden Valley, which is located just across Auburn-Folsom Road from the proposed church in January of 1973. And we have lived in the same home on Morningside Drive for the past thirty-seven years. We moved to this area because we believe this would an ideal place to raise our family, allowing our children ample opportunity to enjoy the outdoors and to achieve a good education. We have not been disappointed. Our three children, the youngest of which was born here, thrived in this area. They all attended Del Aro High School before pursuing higher education. One drawback to living in Granite Bay was the lack of a Catholic parish in the area. We continued to attend St. Rose Parish in Roseville, which we had joined when living in that city. Since moving to Granite Bay in 1973, many things have changed. And the area has experienced significant growth, bringing more services, commercial establishments, and even more churches. In January of 2004, St. Joseph Morello Parish was established to meet the needs of the growing Catholic community in this area. Several of our neighbors in Hidden Valley are active members of this parish. In the fall of 2008, our proposed church project was presented to the Hidden Valley Homeowners Association at an open meeting. Many of the members attended. And to the best of my knowledge, no significant objections were raised. At present, many parishioners already travel on Auburn-Folsom Road to attend church services, which are currently held at Cabot Middle School on Fuller Drive, just south of the intersection of Auburn-Folsom Road and Douglas Boulevard, or to attend meetings at the Morello Youth Center on Wells Avenue. Therefore, we do not believe that the proposed location of our new church will adversely affect existing traffic on Auburn-Folsom Road. We believe that the new church will be a valuable addition to our community, not only as a spiritual home for our parish, but as the center for many parish programs that provide outreach to our parishioners and to the community at large. For example, our various youth programs, outreach to the sick and elderly, help and support to those in need. Over the past two years, the parish delivered over 350 Christmas baskets to needy families in our area. Fundraising for various charities, such as the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive, which each year has raised thousands of dollars for the National Association for the Mentally Ill in Placer County and Camp Recreation at Eagle Lake for the developmentally disadvantaged. I could list many other charitable endeavors in which our parishioners are involved. But we want to emphasize that the project will benefit the entire community as well as meeting the needs of our parish. The members of our parish have demonstrated their commitment to this project by successfully conducting a capital campaign during the worst economic conditions most of us have ever experienced. This is a testament to the need for a permanent spiritual home for our parish, driven by the many parishioners who believe in the value and necessity of this project. On behalf of approximately 700 families and individuals who are parishioners of this parish, I respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to deny the appeal and enable our parish project to move forward. I thank you for allowing me to address the board. I thank you for your thoughtful attention and your consideration.
Thank you. There were two other folks that were identified by the father. If they would come forward, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Yule, board members, counsel. My name is Mike De Laurentis. My wife and I have been residents of Granite Bay for sixteen years. I want to talk about the entrance and exit to the property. The most logical entrance and exit point was to the north end of the property at the intersection of Cabot-Stalman Road and Laird Road. There was a concern on the part of the South Placer Fire District that this traffic could harm their emergency vehicles exiting and entering. Now, I have a different perspective on this because not only do I serve on the parish building committee, but I'm also a member of the South Placer Fire District Board of Directors. So I looked at this and gave it a lot of thought. I argued with myself quite a bit over a period of several months. But there were a lot of people who brought some good suggestions forward, looked at many, many different options. And the one option that seemed to be the most viable and acceptable to everybody, including the fire district, was for the church to fund an emergency traffic light, flashing light, on Auburn-Folsom Road, right out in front of Station 19, which the fire district could operate when their emergency vehicles exited and entered. So that's what we decided to do. It was an unfunded liability for the church. But we felt that, the church felt that, in the interest of public safety, in the interest of being good neighbors, that was the right thing to do. Father Arnold will hold a couple more collections and will pay for that traffic light. And everything should be okay. Fire Chief Carrato is here. He was certainly on board with this decision. And he thinks that, if I could speak for him, he thinks that this will actually improve the Station 19's position. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. As the others have said, I hope we get a positive outcome of this and we can start turning dirt and building our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Yule and board. I moved to Granite Bay with my pregnant wife and three-year-olds.
Name for the record?
I'm sorry, Tim Vostias. I moved to Granite Bay with my pregnant wife and three-year-old son fourteen years ago. My son's now a junior in high school. And my youngest will be graduating from Cabot Junior High this June. We chose Granite Bay because the area had a sense of community. And the original feel that we got from our neighborhood and from our neighbors was that sense of community. We made friends very quickly. I'll celebrate my thirteenth year coaching for Lakeside Little League this year. I've also coached for Eureka U Soccer League. We were on the Loomis Basin Dolphins until the Granite Bay Gators were formed as a team. We served on that board and we're a founding family of the Granite Bay Gators. My wife has served on every site council and PTC school board that my two sons have attended. And also served on the Gate Advisory Committee. attended, and also served on the Gate Advisory Committee for the district, and was a principal parent used to hire one of the most recent principals. We saw changes in our community when we built Fice Park and Granite Bay Community Park. There was opposition to both of those, but it brought a tighter sense of community to Granite Bay by allowing our little league and the people that we played and practiced with to come in closer. It gave us the ability to not have to travel outside of our boundaries in order to have those sports. We saw that when Granite Bay Gators moved to Granite Bay, and we started our own team. We're now faced with looking at a community church that will also bring our community tighter. As was mentioned, there are surrounding Catholic church. We attended the Catholic Church Divine Savior in Orangevale for the first eight years that we lived here, and while we had a sense of community there, it wasn't our community. The kids, the families that we met, didn't go to school with the kids that are kids. They didn't play sports with our kids. They didn't swim on the same team. We didn't see them in the grocery stores. We didn't see them in the restaurants local to our community. The Granite Bay church that we joined in 2004, St. Joseph Morello Parish, brought community to us once again and tightened that community up even more, and it did so because when our kids now attended church, they saw the kids that they went to school with. They saw the kids that they played sports with, and it made them desire to want to live a faith-filled life and to explore their faith. We have a youth program, as Father mentioned, that services well over three hundred kids from age first all the way through high school. It's extremely active, one of the most active in the entire diocese. As a result of that, we see positive change from it. I was elected, and I served four years on the original parish council, and started in January of '04 as the head of the building committee. While not involved in construction and development as a profession, I have come to learn a great deal about developing a project in Placer County over the past six years. We've met every aspect of what the county and SEQA process required of us in planning, design, and mitigation measures, and we've done so at a great cost. Our local community association, Granite Bay Community Association, and the municipal advisory council have unanimously endorsed this project, and while I thoroughly respect this process and am glad to live in a place that allows everyone to have a voice, I would hope that our esteemed board sees the value of community that this project will bring to Granite Bay and votes this morning to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's the four speakers that were identified by the Father. We will go ahead and continue with public comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the board, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. You will see a little counter on the podium there that kind of counts down, gives you an idea as to how your time is going. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Please just go ahead and line up right down the aisle there if you kind of gives me an idea how many folks we've got coming. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Toni Collins, and I'm a volunteer musician at St. Joseph Morello Parish. I've been a Catholic church musician for some twenty-five years, and there are just three really brief points I'd like to make. Number one, this is a fabulous parish. We just joined about a year ago, having volunteered to play music at their third mass they ever held, and we just knew what a great place it was, and I just want to share with you that for four years, our kids were involved at another church. We really couldn't change, but as soon as they grew up, we joined, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful community. Number two, I'd like to share with you some of the trouble that occurs because of meeting in a gymnasium. There is, there are three dedicated teams of people who come in every week, and they set up the altar. They set up the banners. They set up the microphones. They set up the speakers, none of which is light. And then there's another three teams who take them down every week, every Sunday, and so it really is a matter of trying to get everybody to work together, and it's tough. It's tough, and these people have done it for, what is it, six years now, and it shows a great deal of dedication. The third point I'd like to make is the intangible worth of having an actual building. Being a church musician for twenty-five years, I hang around churches a lot. I'm there for meetings. I'm there for rehearsals, and from time to time, I don't want to, you know, give the impression that there's a lot of traffic, but you just have people show up at a church because they're hurting, because they don't have any food, because they don't have any diapers, or in our case, when the hills behind our house in Southern California were burning, and we had to evacuate, our family all met at our local parish. So, you just have people who know that they can be helped, and that makes a church, any church, worthwhile to the whole community, not just the worshiping community of St. Joseph Morello Parish. So, I hope that as a board you do approve this project because it's a very worthwhile one, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, and this opportunity for me to present is appreciated. I speak for myself and my wife, who's lived in the area of Placer for the last nineteen years this month. We have got to be a part of this church only within the last year. We're a part of the Catholics Come Home Project. Some of you may have seen those commercials on TV in the last month. It's been an opportunity for my wife and I to participate in what we believe to be a family church, a church that basically has provided to myself and my wife an opportunity to do what we have been talking about for so many years, and to stop talking to start walking the walk, and that is by being a part of a great community. If there was ever a time for these, for you gentlemen to assist this county to continue in this project of fulfillment of family values, it is today, and I would ask the, respectfully ask the board to allow us to continue to do that with our Catholic church. Thank you. George Martinez, thank you.
Again, if there's anybody that would like to address the board, please go ahead and line up at this point.
Good morning. I'm Lee Mize, and I live in the area. I have friends on both sides here. We've only heard one side, and that's a shame because there's good people on both sides. But the Catholic Church has a little advantage today because of all these people that was asked to come. They won't, they won't speak, but I hope that you listen to yourself, make, make some decisions that's going to affect all, not just the Catholic Church. There's a few of us, but we're not told that we should come here to speak. I am, I'm here to speak from my heart and for a few that feels like this is a lost cause. I don't believe any of us should look at the church as not being welcomed, not here. They aren't asking us to put them down. They aren't asking us to run them out of town. Lots of churches are welcome, but there are a few issues that hasn't been addressed. We've heard about how good they are and what they've done for the community, and some of my best friends go to that church, and they're right here today. They wish that I wasn't speaking, by the way. But this is, this is my issue. My issue is that I live within about a quarter of a mile from there, but I live on Twin Rocks Road. Twin Rocks Road is getting so busy coming in and out that I'm afraid it's only a matter of a few more years, we're going to have a stop sign there, and that is, that's not the worst. We're going to have stop signs on every intersection up there. It won't be long, and if you take all these people, I think we have probably better than two hundred people here, that's just a small fraction of the people and the cars that's going to come out onto Auburn and Folsom Road. When you have that many people on a Sunday and other days that they meet, they're going to have to have stop signs, and stop signs are good, but you know, that isn't why we moved out in this area. We moved out because we, we don't like stop signs. We don't want more people. We don't want our, our, we have a little favorite bird. It's a little hawk that sets up there overlooking this property. He's been setting up there for about eight years now, I think. He won't have a place to fly and to be able to get a hold of some wild varmints out in their fields. That's all going to be paved over. My, my main issue that I like to bring to you people to consider is that the traffic is a real issue. Stop signs is going to be a real issue, and, and if, if we have all these people coming out there, we hadn't even talked about, about the intersection. What are they going to do when you have bicycles, you have automobiles, and you have people walking across the road because a lot of people will be walking to church now because they live so close? So, my, my issue isn't against the church. It's against the, where it's located and how you get to it, and, and we're not talking about people every other day coming. We're talking about all of these people coming all at one time, and if that, if that isn't an issue that shouldn't be addressed, I don't know what is, and I would like, I'd like to ask the church, they keep talking about this isn't going to be a school, but you know what? It looks like a school. It's, it's going to act like a school, and my, my thought is, it won't be long before it will be a school. Then what we have is we have, if that's the case, we'll have people going there not just on weekends, all, all day long, in and out. So, I think in long terms is what we should be looking at, not today. These are all good people. They're all here for the, for the right reasons, but I think we should address the main issue, and that is, where can we put this church that won't, that won't be a problem for traffic? When I, I lived out there for thirty-five years. I had one stop sign when I went to work in Sacramento, in Roseville, one stop sign, thirty-five years. It took me fifteen minutes to get to Roseville. It takes you half an hour.
Sir, if I could ask you to wrap up your remarks, please.
Yes. I would just like for you to, to address and to think about the idea of the traffic. We haven't, we haven't really mentioned that, and that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, and again, if you could, please try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Go ahead. Is there anybody else after this gentleman who wishes to speak? Okay, come on down, sir. Is there anybody else after that gentleman? Okay, we'll cut off public comment after that gentleman. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chairman Yuler, members of the board. My name is David Mullenbrook. I'm a twenty-year resident of Granite Bay who researched the area's growth potential before I made the decision of making a lifetime investment and purchasing a home in the area. I come from a planning background, and so I know about due diligence. I know about researching the potential of property growth, and I know that the board is often faced with concerns from the public about not knowing what's going to be built in their area, or my real estate agent told me this, or, you know, you get, you often hear those stories, and here I think we have a different situation where, as a property owner in the area and as other property owners in the area, there was an expectation that the growth and development would continue as this community was planned. In this particular area, it's four-point-six acre parcels. It's not an easy, nor is it a popular decision to come out and speak in opposition to a church. Privately, I've had discussions with other people who simply, as the gentleman spoke before, either felt this is a lost cause or don't, don't care to put themselves in a public forum in which to come out and publicly oppose a church, but nonetheless, I felt strong enough on my convictions that I needed to come out here and speak my piece, so here I go. I'm not opposed to the church itself. I appreciate and support the church and the things that they bring to the community. I appreciate everyone looking to uphold and to support and to better our community. I have no qualms with that. I do have qualms with the project in what I consider to be an inconsistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan and also failure on the county's part to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. This church seems to be part of a disturbing trend of getting your foot in the door and then coming back years later and seeking an expansion. Despite the Granite Bay Community Association and MAC's unanimous support, as I mentioned earlier, there are people out there who don't believe that the MAC or the Granite Bay Community Association represent their points of views, and so I just ask you to keep that in mind, that despite these two bodies' support for the project, there are other people who live in the area who do not necessarily belong to those organizations and therefore do not have those organizations represent their points of view. The Granite Bay Community Plan includes a series of goals and policies that are applicable to the proposed project. These goals and policies speak to scale and size, but they do not include specific numbers related to square footage, acreage, or lot coverage. The goals and policies do contain such language as "scaled to meet residents' needs," "preservation of unique character exemplified by general rural environment," "Buildings shall be of size and scale conducive to maintaining the rural residential atmosphere," "Architectural scales shall be more similar to that of residential buildings," "Non-residential buildings shall generally be of small or moderate size," "Intensity of use of an institutional site shall be limited to that which is compatible with adjoining uses and in keeping with the rural character of Granite Bay." Although not specific to size, as noted before, the common theme throughout these goals and policies is to maintain and protect the rural atmosphere and the environment. The project, as described in the staff report, and as we're all familiar, is an area with mostly four-point-six acre or larger zoning with large residential uses. An institutional use at this scale and size does not maintain and protect the rural atmosphere and the environment. The intensity of the proposed project is much greater than that which was contemplated in the Granite Bay Community Plan and also which was analyzed in the Granite Bay Community Plan EIR. The proposed project is five-hundred-and-forty-nine weekend daily trips and two-thousand-one-hundred Sunday trips. That's nearly twenty times higher on the weekday, nearly eighty times higher on the weekend, as compared to what would be generated under current zoning. These numbers do not reflect the development of a school, which apparently is imminent. As I mentioned before, as board members, you probably hear complaints from people who live next door to vacant or underutilized properties who are surprised to learn about development proposals because a real estate agent or home builder told them the site must remain vacant. That's a failure on behalf of homeowners to conduct due diligence. In this case, that failure did not occur. This is not an NIBI issue. This is not about not knowing what land use is designated for and zoned for. This is about an expectation that landlords have for continued rural development. At the Planning Commission meeting, there were...
Perfect. Could you wrap up your remarks, please?
I shall.
Thank you.
At the Planning Commission, there were comparisons made to densities, and folks pointed out that there are large residences being built in Granite Bay, and I would consider those to be the exception rather than the rule. I would also prefer the development of large residences from a traffic standpoint and an air quality standpoint. The proposed project will generate much more in terms of traffic and air quality than it would if the project site were developed according to current land use and zoning There are no large commercial or institutional structures on Auburn-Folsom Road from Douglas Boulevard to the city of Auburn. That's a distance of over eleven miles. On the other side of the Granite Bay Community Plan area, Douglas Boulevard and CR College, you have the Bayside Church, but that's adjacent to Roseville, which is a more intense and urban-developed area. I think this side of Granite Bay Community Plan did not anticipate, nor did it expect, the type of, the size and the type of proposal that is being explored at this particular time. In conclusion, if the board can somehow see past the project's inconsistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan, then I implore you to do the right thing from a SEQA perspective and require the preparation of an EIR to fully identify and disclose the environmental consequences of this project so that that information is available to the public and is used to make an informed decision on the project. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my discussion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Pete Lopez. I live on Auburn-Folsom Road, and I hear about, talk about traffic. I've lived there for twenty-three years on Auburn-Folsom Road. Have I seen my share of traffic with the two openings of Folsom Bridges there. It has not changed my mind as far as the traffic. To me, it's just, I look at it as more life just going by, but again, there is, I lived on Auburn-Folsom Road for quite a while. The traffic's going to come. The growth is going to come. I always said, if you don't like the area, you have the option to move. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this point and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. Any board members have any questions? The staff supervisor, why don't you?
I have a couple of questions that Dave Cook may want to answer and/or staff, trying to get my head around all this more comprehensively.
Mr. Cook, you want to step up here just in case you have appropriate...
Is a 404 permit issued already for the project?
No, it has not been. It is in process.
And just, so I have a better understanding of the confusion that I think was referred to. The 404 application includes a school, correct?
There is shown a future school on the site in this area, here to the southeast, as a potential land use, simply as a placeholder...
as a potential land use, simply as a placeholder to indicate what might occur there. It could have just as easily been shown as soccer fields, and if we'd contemplated the confusion it might have caused, we would have chosen that as a placeholder instead.
Okay, thanks. And I think both Staff and the applicant have adequately addressed this, but for the record and just for my satisfaction, the SEQA cumulative impacts of what is proposed, I think everybody is satisfied they were fully addressed in the environmental review and the resulting mitigations from that, and if in fact a school is proposed at some time in the future, the impacts of that and the cumulative impacts of the totality of that added to the project will be addressed appropriately at that timeframe when it's necessary, correct?
Correct. When, when the applicant, when and if the applicant comes back in for the school, they will have to go process, go back through the environmental review process as well as obtain modification of the existing use permit for the project, and there would be conditions and mitigations associated with the new school, and the conditions would, you know, the conditions now clearly state that there is no school allowed with this, this permit, so when they come back in, they'll have to modify the existing use permit to allow for the school.
Those are all my questions.
Supervisor Holmes, any questions? Okay. Just a couple, want to just punch a couple points. Your comfortable with the county approval on this project on the basis of mitigated NECDAC satisfies our SEQA obligations?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Do you have any concerns under SEQA as it relates to the project segmentation that was just discussed?
No, we do not.
There were a, a number of comments regarding consistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan and particularly meeting the need of the community. As, as I do my numbers, Granite Bay is a community of roughly 15, 16,000 people all in, and in the U.S. today, approximately 76% of people identify themselves as Christian of some form or another, 23-ish identify themselves as Catholic. So, as I do my numbers, that means somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 people in the Granite Bay Community Plan, just following those percentages, would identify themselves as Catholic. I certainly see a need for a Catholic parish physical location, meeting the needs of our existing community members. I appreciate Supervisor Holmes's questions about parking light lots because obviously a concern of mine as well. Suffice it to say, to say that as good stewards of the dollar, I doubt they want to pay for, pay PG&E to have lights on that they're not going to be using throughout the night. The, this came to the MAC for information at least two times, if I recall correctly, and EJ, I don't know, I don't recall if you were the staff planner that brought this to the MAC or was it somebody else?
You know, I, I'm not sure if I actually presented it at that time. Roy was probably there. I've been to most of the MAC meetings, so I was, I was there during both of those times.
It, it came at least two times for information, then one time for action. At no time during any of those did I ever hear, and I try to attend all the MAC meetings, did I ever hear any opposition by anybody. I was pleased to see, a little bit surprised, an unsolicited letter of support by the Granite Bay Community Association. Sandy Harris and her organization have been very active, and actually, some of the original authors of the 1989 Granite Bay Community Plan sit as, as directors of that community association, so folks who clearly understand the goals, policies, and intent of that document writing, writing their support. I, I think it's time for the Catholic community in Granite Bay to have their own home. I'm comfortable this is the right location, and, you know, we talk about, we talk about traffic. In my humble opinion, a lot of society's ills might be solved if we had more traffic going into churches on Sunday rather than less, so.
Yes, I will move that we deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission approval of the St. Joseph Morello Church project.
We have a motion by Supervisor Holmes to deny the appeal, seconded by Supervisor Wiegant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. Appeal's denied. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And for, and for, for the record, that motion adopted the findings contained in our board packet on pages 10 and 11. This board having no other action today. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. (applause)[1785.61]